Good evening. I like to call this meeting to order, Monday, September 11th, for a school board meeting. On tonight's agenda, we have the approval of the agenda, superintendent's report. We have five study session topics, including school start update, the referendum update, and then we have 2017 assessment update. We have policy development, first readings of policy 514 bullying and policy 526 hazing. We have our second readings on policy 417 chemical use and abuse, 418 drug free workplace, 501 weapons, 502 search of lockers. Then we have, on our action agenda, we have the approval of the policies, second readings, 417, 418, 501, 502. And then we have an approval of an employment agreement with the St. Louis Park Custodial and Grounds Employee Group Contract. Then we have communications and transmittals, and then we will have adjournment. I should point out that one of our board members is running a bit late. She should be arriving here shortly. And another had a conflict who we hope will be able to join us, but are, given our agenda, he may not make it in time. And I see one who is entering right now. Oh, and he's walking around. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Moved by Jim, seconded by Karen. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? That passes 4-0. I should note, we do have a quorum. Four is a quorum. All right, we move on to our superintendent's report. Aston.
All right. Good evening, Chair Yarros, and members of the board. This evening, my report will highlight some of the events connected to the staff workshop weeks leading up to the start of the school year. During the week of August 21st, if my clicker works, let's try that again. Okay, there we go. During the week of August 21st, we welcomed an excited group of 30 staff members. Many of the new licensed staff members started their experience in St. Louis Park by attending a two-day Beyond Diversity training. The training was designed to give staff the tools to engage in, sustain, and deepen conversations about race in our school district. After the two days of Beyond Diversity, new staff participated in the orientation where they had an opportunity to meet district leaders, the mayor, and learn more about our mission and strategic plan. The Park Association of Teachers facilitated a tour of the school district, and staff had an opportunity to spend time at their sites getting oriented to their schools and classrooms. Human Resources, Teaching and Learning, and the Park Association of Teachers did an excellent job collaborating to create a positive and welcoming experience for new licensed staff. The following week, the week of August 28th, we welcomed back all staff and hosted our all-staff kickoff. The day was filled with professional development connected to our strategic plan strategies, and we provided professional learning opportunities to ensure that our staff are informed about the options they have during certain emergency response situations. Overall, the day ran smoothly, and each of our staff members that I spoke to at least expressed appreciation and excitement about the day. I would like to give a special thanks to Carrie Ross, Lisa Girdon, Lisa Green, Nate Tangen, Rick Cryer, Sarah Thompson, Sharon Burrell, Tammy Reynolds, the St. Louis Park Police, for all spending a significant amount of time planning and preparing to ensure that the day was a success. I would also like to thank PAT and Spark, who sponsored a lunch for our staff on that day. Lastly, I would just like to remind everyone of ways to stay connected to the school district. And you'll see our Twitter handle, Facebook handle, Instagram, and our website where you can find all of the information you would ever want about our schools and upcoming referendum, and our YouTube channel. I would be remiss if I did not say, while we had a tremendous start to the school year, that last week, one of our staff members lost their spouse, Bill Matthews, who was a wise-liter police officer who was killed off of Highway 12 in 101. So our prayers are with Shawn Matthews, our assistant athletic director here at the high school, who Bill was her husband, and their family during this very difficult time. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will move on to our school start update. And I think Superintendent Osai is going to present on that topic.
All right. Good evening again, Chair Yarros, members of the board. So with the superintendent report, I really focused on staff and the kickoff of school. And what I would like to do for the start of school report is really drill down and look at how our students experienced the opening of the school year. So for the purpose of this report, I'm going to focus on the 4,000, excuse me, 4,660 students that started the school year on September 5th. I would like to first start off by thanking all of you and every community member that came out and participated in day one activities. The St. Louis Park community has a long tradition of supporting its schools, and that was evident by the number of community members, city officials, and members of local business community that came out and greeted and welcomed our students as they returned back to school. As of last Friday, our enrollment is up compared to the end of last school year at the elementary level. As we monitor this, we're monitoring this closely, excuse me, to try to make sure that we have balance and ensuring that all of our sections are balanced so that our students are not experiencing overcrowding at any particular grade level at any site. So what I want to share is that we're continually monitoring that, watching that, and really paying attention so that our students have a great experience here in St. Louis Park Public Schools. Day one activities at the middle school, you know, I had an opportunity to be there at the middle school that morning as they start at 7:30. So I left Park Spanish Immersion, and, I'm sorry, I left the bus company. I greeted all of our bus drivers as they drove off, and I went to the middle school, and it was a lot of excitement. So 1,030 students entered with great smiles and energy. I'm really excited to start the 1718 school year. And I observed each other, you know, each of them greeting and hugging and high-fiving each other. I actually observed only one, I saw one person crying, and it wasn't a student, it was a parent. And I'm assuming, I don't know if it was tears of joy or tears of happiness, but what I do know is that as I walked around the building after all of the students were in, that the school did a great job in trying, working hard to build community and make sure that all of, you know, incoming sixth graders and the returning seventh and eighth graders felt welcome and supported. While we're excited about the very steady enrollment at the middle school, there's a couple of things that continue to be a constant. And because of, you know, the increasing enrollment and particularly at the middle school, what we're still experiencing, as you can see from some of the pictures, are, you know, crowded lunchrooms, common spaces, and things of that nature. And, you know, it is our hope that with the upcoming referendum, and Sarah's going to talk a little bit about that, that we'll be able to ease some of those tensions and hotspots. And surely I'll talk about the high school, and you'll see, you know, kind of a recurring theme because of increased enrollment, that some of those spots are a little tight. But our staff is doing a tremendous job making sure our students have what they need to be successful during this time. Day one at the high school, we welcomed back 1,489 students, which is about 90 students more than we ended the school year with last year. The day one activities at the high school were designed to build community and create a safe and nurturing environment where all students know they're welcomed. It was great to see many of our student leaders really taking responsibility to ensure that the activities, the pep fest, the day one activities that occurred at lunch were engaging and exciting for their classmates. And as I mentioned a few seconds ago, similar to the middle school, you know, because of increasing enrollment, and over the last few years, we've seen steady enrollment at the high school, that with 90 more students, you know, we're experiencing some crowded lunchrooms and hallways, and, you know, we have a few situations in which we're really monitoring and trying to make adjustments around class size to the best of our ability to meet the needs of all of our students and staff. Probably, you know, and I'm a little biased, but probably my favorite part of opening week activities were greeting our kindergarteners last Thursday. And I think maybe from a personal reason, I'm a little biased as a current pre-K father, knowing that next year I'll have a kindergarten. It was really kind of some scouting for me. I was, I learned how to fight back the tears. You know, I was like, how do these, how do these parents do it? You know, their babies are going to kindergarten for the first time. So I got a few helpful hints and tips on how to make sure that I'm not bawling on day one next year for my child when they start in St. Louis Park Public Schools. But I was extremely impressed by the kindergarteners. You know, while, you know, many of their parents were nervous and afraid, they were excited to take on a new journey. And I'm always struck when our kindergarteners start in any school district I've ever been because it is a reminder for me. You know, I think the kindergarteners in 2017 would graduate in 2030. And while that seems like that's a long way away, it'll be here before you know it. So it's always a reminder for me of the opportunity, and more importantly, the significance of the opportunity that we have, and we have a very short period of time to make sure that the words of our mission come to life in each of the experiences of our students. So while, you know, it's a joyous occasion, it also is a reminder of the significant work that we have in front of us. So with that, that concludes my back-to-school update. Any questions?
So I did, we talked, so you'd mentioned a little bit, there are some, are there some hotspots, you think, when you're looking, and I don't know if we can get that grid at some point that shows the class size? I know we're kind of waiting for things to settle in a bit. What are the initial impressions that?
Well, this week, in the superintendent weekly board update, I'll make sure I'll include the grid. The challenge with sending it last week is that, you know, we still have some students that, you know, aren't showing up, but they're counting in our numbers, and we got to get them withdrawn. And really, probably the best time to send it would be after the 15-day withdrawal period. But I think what I'll do is share this, at the end of this week, and then share it again after that period just so that we can see what the difference in enrollment is. What I can suggest, though, I mean, I don't know if we want to call it a hotspot, but where we probably see some of our greatest increase in enrollment is at this point at the high school. You know, as I mentioned before, we're up, you know, more students at this time than we were last year, which, you know, and I don't say that if that's a bad thing because it's a good thing, you know, our schools are growing. But also with that comes, you know, facility and space needs that we have to be able to accommodate. Joe.
So one of the things we talked about last week, and I'd like you to address to the thousands of folks in the viewing audience, is about transportation. That's something we hear about on the first week all the time. Seemed relatively quiet, but obviously it takes a little longer if you could comment about what you saw last week.
Thank you, Joe. So I was extremely impressed, you know. First week, I'm used to in previous experiences getting multiple calls, you know, five, 10 calls. And I was shocked. I went down to some of my colleagues that are here and just like, is this, is this normal, right? I received two calls around, and they were both about transportation, but it wasn't that the bus didn't show up or it was just that parents were interested in changing their bus stop, you know. So I was extremely impressed, and thank you for the reminder because I would really like to thank our team, Sandy Saline and Sarah Thompson, and everyone who works with Park Adams Transportation because it was, it was pretty much close to, I won't use the word perfect, but it was pretty much close to, I'll say it was excellent. How about that? Safer word than perfect.
Okay, Karen.
And one thing we should note about transportation, the state of Minnesota increased the fee. It's $500 fine if a driver passes the red, when the bus is stopped, the red lights are flashing, the stop sign arm is out. Don't pass that stopped bus. You are risking kids' lives. So the fine for that went up this year.
Thank you.
Well, kudos to you. I heard, you know, good things, at least in my house, it seems to have gotten off smoothly. And so thank you for that, and the staff. It's a good start to the school year, so. All right.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the referendum update. Sarah Thompson.
One moment, please. We're going to cross our fingers and toes that the technology is on our side tonight. So far, so good. All right. Superintendent Osai, members of the board, my pleasure to give you a referendum update tonight. As you know, we're in the heat of communications systems for the referendum coming on November 7th. Lots going on. We have a very active vote yes committee made up of parents and community members as well. So community members should be hearing a lot from not only the district but our citizen committee. So we're excited to share with you some information tonight. Wanted to be a little more brief and give you some of the high points as a reminder that this is going on. Need. Mr. Osai just gave you a very good back-to-school report and also pointed out some of our needs. We're seeing them very loudly this fall in terms of our space shortage at the middle school and the high school, our need for additional space at the elementary school when it comes to flexible learning. So what does that look like in terms of furniture, technology, things like that at the elementary level? You're seeing increasing enrollment. We just talked about that. We've got aging facilities across the district. Tom Bravo and crew do a great job maintaining what we have, but many of them are just old, and I've heard the word tired recently. It's that our facilities are tired. And so we have a definite need for flexible learning spaces. You've heard from the superintendent before talking about how desks and rows were commonplace when he was in school. They were also when I was in school. It's a different day now for our kindergarteners. The, as he said, the class of 2030 just started in our schools. And so what can we do to give them the best in terms of flexible learning? Technology infrastructure. We all know that as we walk around with various devices, we need to be able to have a system that supports that. And in St. Louis Park, we're in a very unique position with our school and our city having contiguous boundaries. Our schools truly are community centers. And so not only by day, serving adult learners, but by night and by weekends, they are used almost constantly by our community. So those are some of the needs that are at the forefront as we look towards this referendum. Well, I'm hoping that tonight I can share with you some more information about our referendum.
Hello. My name is Aston Osai, and it is my privilege to serve as the new superintendent in the St. Louis Park Public School District. I'm a proud resident of St. Louis Park. I'm a husband and father of two amazing boys who will graduate from St. Louis Park High School in 2030 and 2034. Arranged the roles with teachers at the front of the room lecturing. Today's classrooms are grounded in collaboration, critical thinking, and problem solving. St. Louis Park schools have done a masterful job.
I can only get you so far, apparently. I'm going to pause this because I don't think it does a very good job for us. And head forward. You're going to try again? Cindy's going to give it another try. She's more optimistic than I am.
Hello. My name is Aston Osai, and it is my privilege to serve as the new superintendent in the St. Louis Park Public School District. I'm a proud resident of St. Louis Park. I'm a husband and father of two amazing boys who will graduate from St. Louis Park High School in 2030 and 2034. When I was in school, we sat in desks, arranged the roles with teachers at the front of the room lecturing. Today's classrooms are grounded in collaboration, critical thinking, and problem solving. St. Louis Park schools have done a masterful job maintaining its facilities, but they are old and not flexible for next century learning. Did you know, this high school was built in 1956 when Elvis Presley entered the U.S. Music Church for the first time with Heartbreak Hotel? This was also the same time that President Eisenhower was re-elected for a second term in office. They do say, everything old becomes new again. It is time for St. Louis Park to invest in our schools, to showcase our award-winning educational programs, promote our performing arts, support our sports and activities, and continue the longstanding tradition of schools as community centers. Take a look at the following video to learn more about the upcoming referendum.
Voters in St. Louis Park will see two school funding requests on the November 7th ballot. Question one is an operating referendum renewal with no tax increase. This funding helps pay for teachers, support staff, supplies, and programs. School funding has not kept pace with inflation or the demands of instruction. This renewal will ensure world-class education continues for all students. Question two is a bond referendum that will improve existing facilities across the district for all students and all residents. Our facilities are old. They've served us well, and they must be improved to meet the needs of our learners. This referendum will provide safety for students and staff by adding secure entrances at all schools, classroom and lab space at the secondary schools, updated facilities and furnishings to serve all students K-12, enhanced technology infrastructure to support next century learning, improved community spaces, and finally, kitchen facilities to make healthy, made-from-scratch meals for all students. How do we meet all of these facility needs? Extensive remodeling and additions throughout the district with a focus on our middle school and high school. Question two would provide $100.9 million in funding to support these changes. The tax impact on an average-valued home would be about $12 per month.
It's a long list. There's truly something for everyone in the proposed improvements. We need these updates. The college and career readiness of our students and the lifelong learning of all residents depend upon it. I'm excited about the future of St. Louis Park Public Schools. The proposed operating and bond referendums allow us to continue our mission to provide a safe and nurturing environment that energizes and enhances the spirit. Park pride is alive and well in SLP. It's time to come together to invest in our future. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th. Please vote.
I would encourage people to take another look at it. It really gives you a nice snapshot of everything that's included in the referendum, how it touches really all students K-12, as well as all of our community members within St. Louis Park. Some new information I have for you tonight that is extra important is we have set the dates for our public meetings. So we will do two formal public meetings, October 2nd, Monday, 7:00 p.m. in the middle school cafeteria, and Wednesday, October 25th, at 7:00 p.m. in the high school cafeteria. Those will be the traditional soup to nuts, everything you would need to know about the referendum, financial information, opportunity for Q and A, traditional meetings. We're also trying something a little different this year. On Tuesday, October 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we will be providing a Twitter town hall. So from the comfort of your home, from the comfort of your airplane seat, your car, a coffee shop, you can log in and ask your questions, and we will respond at that time. So that meeting is October 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., a Twitter town hall. So we would encourage everyone to take a look at the information. If you have questions, seek us out, participate in a public meeting, as well as we'll be around town at events, at meetings, sharing the message, interacting with staff, interacting with community members, parents, myself from the district, Mr. Osai, as well as members of our team, and the vote yes committee will be out as well. So we just wanted to share that with you tonight. Do you have any questions about the referendum?
Sarah, at those meetings, will we have like architects, Tom Bravo? Who do we anticipate?
We will. Yeah, we'll have the full panel of staff that can answer really any question. So superintendent will be there, as well as principals from the various grade levels and buildings, answering detailed questions. We will have Tom Bravo there, our facilities manager, the architects there who have done a lot of the facility planning with us, worked with the learning design team. They can speak to best practice and timelines and construction and things like that. And so we really should be able to answer any question that would come up at a meeting.
All right, just a thought, Cindy, we may want to post those in case we have more than four board members who appear at those, so just as a precaution.
Any other questions right now about the referendum?
Did we set up online calculator for tax impact?
Yep, the tax impact calculator is on the website. Yep, go to WWSLPSchools.org and click on the referendum, and you can put in the value of your home, and it will give you the exact tax impact that you will see with the referendum.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks for, Ayler's helped us with that.
They did.
All right. That's, that's great. So you can know exactly, and, you know, we're getting a lot for those dollars, too. So if we pass that, you're paying, but it's, you were getting a lot as a district. So there's a lot of items. Okay, any other questions, Sarah, this time? All right, thanks. Thanks for getting those scheduled on the calendar, and that's great. All right. The next item is the 2017 assessment update. I think our Director of Research and Assessment, Prachi Merkaji, is going to present.
I'm not seeing the adapter that was here earlier this afternoon. Okay, let's see, maybe this will work. Yeah. I'm good. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to present the 2017 State Assessment Report, and these are from the spring tests that our students took. I want to start out by talking about this graph that Superintendent Osai has shared with us at various meetings and professional development activities. The desired future, the triangle, is set out for us, described for us by our strategic plan mission. And the strategic plan mission, especially the one that says that all students will achieve the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to meet or exceed rigorous academic standards without demographically predictable results. The data that I'm about to share today describes our current reality, and through a collective set of actions that are grounded in our core values, we wish to move to our desired future. This is how our work connects. The world's best workforce, which is a Minnesota state statute, impacts us and how we do our work as a public school district. It requires us to set student achievement goals and report to the public, to our community, on how we're doing with our progress towards those goals. And these goals that we have in our world's best workforce is aligned with our strategic plan mission. At the school level, the site improvement plan lays out the goals for the sites and how they are going to get to that goal during the year. The way we achieve this work is through collaborative teams. And again, using a collective set of actions that are grounded in our core values, we use research-based strategies that are technical as well as adaptive in order to work towards our goals. You may have heard of the Every Student Succeeds Act. This is the eighth reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, previously known as No Child Left Behind. So it was recently reauthorized in December 2015, and the state is still working on its plan of how it's going to meet, how students in Minnesota are going to meet the requirements that are set out in ESSA. The state recently submitted its plan The state recently submitted its plan to the feds for, to the Federal Department of Education for review, and once the feds give them feedback, then they're going to make changes accordingly and resubmit. But as of now, this is what we know. ESSA provides more flexibility to state and local agencies for accountability and school improvement. Some of the indicators of success in the state plan are as follows. Academic achievement, and this is going to impact all our schools. This is familiar for us. It's thought of in terms of proficiency, and as in years past under NCLB, it would, students who are proficient are going to generate points, and students who are partially proficient are going to generate half a point. Academic progress, this is going to impact elementary and middle schools. Again, there are elements of it that we are familiar with, but it's going to be redesigned. There's going to be a matrix that's going to look at awarding points to students for moving from one achievement level to a higher achievement level. There is also graduation rate.
Is that particular students? So is that actually measuring personal growth?
Personal growth, every student.
Which No Child Left Behind never had. That was one of the, right? I mean, so we're looking at, from one year to the next, you're looking at different students. But here, we're actually, a component of this is actually how much growth we're making?
Yes.
That's, okay.
Yes.
That's different.
So it'll be included in the accountability measure. Graduation rates are going to continue to be a part of these indicators. Progress towards English language proficiency, this is new under ESSA. Earlier, what we had was under AYP, annual yearly progress. We only looked at students with their reading and math proficiency rates, and for English learners, there was a separate system. And ESSA requires English learners to be brought into this accountability system. So they are also going to generate points depending on, again, their individual targets towards proficiency as measured by a test called ACCESS, which is English language development. School quality or student success indicators, this is also new as part of ESSA, which wants to expand the idea of how we think about school success as moving beyond test scores. So right now, the thinking is that there will be indicators such as attendance, career, college readiness, and then some measure of school culture or environment, and the data will expand as we go through the years and more data becomes available. The state has also set some long-term academic achievement goals, and by 2025, the goal is that academic achievement, the academic achievement rate for all students will be 90% proficiency in reading and math, with no student group coming in below 85%. Another achievement goal is a 90% proficiency rate in third-grade reading, language, arts, with no student group coming in below 85%. Again, the same rates are set forward as goals for eighth-grade math. The graduation rate goal is for 2020, with no group below 85%. And like I mentioned earlier, both four-year and seven-year graduation rates will be looked A significant change this year is how we look at race or ethnicity. So if you were to go to the Minnesota Department of Education report card page, you're going to see that students, student achievement is being reported differently than in previous years. So here's a comparison of what the old categories used to be. There were five categories: American Indian/Alaskan Native, Asian Pacific Islander, Hispanic, Black, and White. And a parent or guardian could only pick one of those answers for their child. Now, under the new categories, you can see that American Indian and Alaska Native, Asian, Asian is now by itself, Pacific Islander has been pulled out with Native Hawaiian, that's a separate category. And then there is the option for parents to mark two or more races. The thinking behind this, this process, the thinking started several years ago, and there was a need to reflect the changing demographics of the country, and so this is how we're going to be reporting data from now on. MDE has already made the transition. And so you will see when, when I'm reporting results, I'm reporting them as they show up on MDE's website.
So in, in making this change, would, when you report them, would you, if there's a low number of students in that category, would you still report it as that, or would you roll them back into another bigger category? I know you haven't done it yet, but what were you thinking?
Restate your question again, please. Are you asking if there's a low number of students for, say, American Indian, then would you report that, or?
No. Say, a student picked two. So my, my family would pick two, African-American and white. And if there's a low number in that, if there's three that picked that, would you keep it as that number, or would you roll those into Black or White?
So I believe they won't be rolled into any other category. They're going to stay, because the category is two or more races, whether it be Hispanic and white, Asian and American Indian, Black and White, whatever it is, they're all going to go under two or more races. Does that make sense?
So then the scores, the, the grade scores or the test scores would stay as they are, whatever it is, no matter how many kids or population that, that group is, two, correct? Is that?
The, if the data set is anything like we use for employees, the individual other choices aren't kept. So if you were, if your family was choosing white and African-American, we would never know that, because your choice was simply two or more. So you can't disaggregate it then and roll it up to a different category.
Are there still some minimum reporting requirements, though? Minimum number of kids in a, in a grouping in order to be reportable, right, to be relevant?
Yes, you're asking, I'm hearing that as a different question. So for data confidentiality, MDE will not report any group that's less than 10 students And to go back to what Rick was saying, the enrollment form that our parents or guardians are filling out when they enroll their student in our district has two sets of race questions. The first set gives them five choices on the left, and they can mark only one. Now, it's not to say that people don't mark more than one. And in the next set, there are these seven choices, and they can mark as many as apply. Okay? Kind of like our U.S. Census records.
So Prachi, when you report trend data for us over time, how are you going to report it? I don't want to lose our prior year's trend data, but how does this change in categories affect that?
Well, we have to switch, and that's what you'll see, that, that's why I use the state reporting website, because whatever I share today is what anybody can find on MDE's website. So the state started collecting this data about three years ago, and therefore, the state is showing data right now. When I go forward, for example, if some, if I'm showing data for Black students, they are Black students who have not marked any other race, so they cannot be multi- or biracial. So they're now being counted in a group separate from where they would have been counted in the old categories. Does that make sense?
So when I'm looking at the 2014 data, is that using 2017 categories?
Yes. The categories were still being collected in 2014, but they were not rolled out publicly until this year.
So we can go back, how far back to 2013 and get accurate trend data? Because the, I mean, when did the categories change at the MDE level, then?
So 2014. So we have four years of data right now according to the new categories.
If, if the family would have indicated, would have not followed the rules and marked two or more on there?
Yeah. So I'm going to be reporting results of the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, and as you know, the, these tests are used to meet the federal requirements of having a standards-based accountability system. In order to have academic standards that are, that meet the federal requirements, every so many years it's set in law, they have to be revised by a team of stakeholders. And the stakeholder group consists of teachers, parents, national content experts, school board, and business, and community members. The MCAs are the only tests that have been specifically designed to measure student learning or student achievement on state standards. And the state brings together teachers and testing experts to develop the tests. Every test item is reviewed multiple times and very carefully before it makes, makes it to the operational test.
Prachi, on that, so we added this component of growth, or we're trying to. MCAs don't really measure that, individual growth.
They do measure growth, and if you recall, we had a very brief LIF for the MMRs, multiple measurement rating, and that awarded points for growth. But that is no longer in existence because we've moved to ESSA.
So are you saying the MCA, so they look at growth from that student from one year to the next on the MCA?
Yes.
Or use that?
Yes, if they have two years of data.
Okay. If, well, yeah, that assumes a student's been there for two years, okay.
And for grades three through eight. So here are the MCA3 reading test results, the district compared to the state for 2013 to 2017. Now, we only have data for the all-student group for 2013. The rest of the student groups, we have data for four years. And you can, there's a lot of information in this table. I'm going to call out a few things that are significant or noticeable. So, oops, let me get back to my... First of all, I would like to call out that at the district level, the number of American Indian students, as you can see, 2014 has data, 2015 is missing data. That means less than 10 American Indian students tested district-wide. In 2014, and, in 2014 and 2016, a total of 10 students tested. And last year, in 2017, a total of 14 students tested. So the fluctuation that you see in the percent proficient has a lot to do with the small number, a very small number of students who tested. Another point to note is we had about 200 students who would have fallen in the category of biracial or multiracial district-wide. So they are not part of any of this data that I am showing you right now in this table. So when we look at the all-student category, we can see that, similar to state rates, our proficiency rates have remained constant, and they range from 61% to 65%, while the state ranged between 59% to 61%. Next, the white students, if you look at that student group, district-wide, again, our student group performed consistently higher than the state peers, and by about 9% to 12% over the four years that we have data. Next, looking at our Black student group, the low was 27%, and the high was 33% over the four years, and the state counterparts also remain stable. The district came in 8% points below their Black counterparts statewide in 2017. So our Black students were at 27% compared to statewide peers at 35%. Asian students proficiency was similar to the state, except in 2017, this most recent year, when they came in 10% points higher than their state counterparts. Our Hispanic students in the district, their proficiency was the highest in 2014 at 52%, and they've performed better than their state peers every year. However, in 2017, they are about 5% points higher, whereas in 2014, they were 16% points higher.
Prachi, before you leave this one, what, this is an average of what grades being tested across the district?
So since this is reading, it's grades three through eight and 10.
Prachi?
Yes.
I'm, I'm trying to put all this together, and I'm struggling with the goal, meeting the goal. So the, the, the new goals, if I understand it correctly, are 90%, right, proficiency? And looking back at 14 through 16, the only real groups that have a real chance of meeting that goal are white and Asian groups, correct?
Yes.
So we really, as administration, as a school, as a district, as everybody involved or invested in this, in our children, are going to have to do something disruptive over the next eight years to meet that goal, correct?
I agree.
Okay.
And disruptive in an intentional way where, and Superintendent Osai has talked about this, that it's a collective set of intentional practices that are grounded in equity, they're grounded in our core values, and they're both research-based, they're technical as well as adaptive.
Agree. Agree. And I do mean disruptive as in the patterns that we've had in the past are going to have to change to meet the needs of our kids, so that we can have a chance to obtain that goal.
Absolutely, and that's why in the first slide, you know, unless we change how we do things, we're going to remain on that straight line at the bottom rather than accelerating So this graph is a visual representation of different student groups proficiency rates.
I'm sorry, seats are out here, but if I recall, so would this been the first year of test data? Are we still a year away from that kindergarten group that we got such good results on?
They're not, they haven't tested yet.
It's next, it'll be this year, they're in third grade this year? Okay, so this will be the first MCA.
Yeah.
Okay, and based on last year, they kind of continued it after kindergarten, for they had maintained that kind of proficiency letter, is that, all right? Because we haven't, we haven't done disruptive things in K through two, and we got some results. Now, I understand they've kind of slowed this past year, but...
Agree, and, and if they continue, we could definitely hit those marks across the board, across the board on, at all, all groups, if we continue that pattern.
But next, but next year will be...
Just a note of caution is that currently, we have, or for many years, we have had students who are proficient in third grade who do not maintain their proficiency as they go through the grade levels. So there are other systemic factors at work, and simply increasing achievement scores in lower grade levels does not always translate to maintaining proficiency. That's why we look at student engagement, that's why we look at many other systemic factors.
Karen?
Yes?
I'm sorry, Prachi, and then another factor is we have, especially at the high school, more and more kids refusing to take the MCAs, which is another impact on the data set, then.
Absolutely. Thanks for bringing that up, Karen. And what I didn't mention is, as part of the transition to ESSA, there are two work groups at MDE, and I'm on both of them. One work group is working on developing a process by which a high, a nationally-recognized high school test can be used in place of the MCAs to meet accountability requirements, and the other work group is looking at the future assessment system. So what we know under ESSA is that MCAs will stay for 2017, 18, and after that, perhaps the future assessment system will roll into place. So these line graphs are a visual of our student groups just within our state, the proficiency rates. And remember what we talked about, the strategic plan mission being without demographic predictability? So again, what this data does is describe our current reality. The dotted line is for our American Indian students, and please ignore the zero for 2015. We do not have data for that year because less than 10%, 10 students tested. So this graph doesn't have the American Indian students. And if you look at the four years of data, we compare all-student groups to the white student groups, that's how we measure closing the achievement gap, and that's the blue line at the top are our white students, and you can see that they're holding steady at about 78 to 80%. The other student groups, if you look at them, the black line right below the white student group is for all students. After that, the kind of yellow, mustard yellow is Asian students, the blue is Hispanics, and the bottom line is for our Black students. So looking at this, the only group that... So looking at this, the only group that seems to be making its way towards, moving towards the white student proficiency rates are our Asian students, based on the last two years of data. We've been talking about proficiency rates up until this point, and this is a distribution of the four achievement levels. It gives us more information, because while we are working on getting every student to be proficient or exceeding, there are students who are at two other levels of achievement that does not meet or partially meets. And we want to see movement in these two, so we want to see fewer students at the does not meet as we make real impacts on how we're teaching our students. So this is for all students, and you can see that the pattern is very, again, very steady. It does not change over the three years. This graph looks at our white student group compared to our black student group. And again, the pattern holds very steady. We see that the distribution is stable over the three years. And for white students, you have almost 36% to 40% who are at the exceeds level, the top green level, and about a little less than 10% at the does not meet. And when you move over to the black student group, you see that the bottom, the does not meets, remains around 43% to 48%, whereas the top exceeds remains at 5%. This is another, this is going to be another indicator of are we making any real shifts in meeting the needs of every student group, especially in this case, our black student group. Next, we have the math results. Again, this is district versus state for four years. All-student data is presented for 2013. The total number tested, again, for our American Indian students, was 14 in 2017. And then for 2014 and 16, it was 10 total students, and less than 10 for 2015. Again, I would like to point out that the fluctuations, 7%, 10%, 50%, is largely a function of the small number of students who tested. Similarly, for reading, we have about 200 students who would fall in the biracial or multiracial category, who are not part of any of the groups except the all-student group. If you look at all students, the district-wide performance ranged between 61% to 65%, similar to the state, which is 60% to 64%. White students, like in reading, performed higher than their state peers, with about a 7% to 12% point average. Our black students performed similar to their state counterparts, ranging between 31% to 33%, and the state also ranged between 30% to 34%, so very, very comparable. Asian students proficiency was 61% in 2017 compared to 55% in 2014. And statewide, this group ranged between 58% to 60% in the four years. Hispanic students in the district has fluctuated in the low to high 40s. And students in the district came in higher than their statewide counterparts, with an average advantage of 6% points.
So these are students that are deemed to be at grade level by the MCA standards?
Yes, at or above, because both meets and exceeds are counted in this. Again, this is a line graph that shows the performance of our student groups within the district. The American Indian student line is dotted because it consists of 10 or fewer students. For 2015, ignore the zero, we had less than 10 students, so we don't have data for that year. Like I said earlier, we look at all-students' performances relative to white students when we think about are we closing the gap? And again, when you look at the line for our white students, it's the top red line, and their performance comes in between 76% to 81%. In comparison, just like that line is steady, the other student group lines are also steady, except the Asian student group, which seems, again, based on this year's data, to be moving upward.
Another thought, you had mentioned, I mean, these numbers are looking the same as the reading numbers, Asian, white kids have a good way of going, or projected up to the, meet the goal, of which I wanted to get to. So I would argue, for us just to noodle on, as opposed to closing the achievement gap between white and non-white, I would propose that we try to close the gap to that goal. Just a thought. So, that's...
And that might very well be the case, can, when the new ESSA requirements are put in place. My reference to comparison with the white student group was based on how it was defined in MMR. The performance of different student groups was compared to, for race categories, it was compared to white students, for EL students, it was compared to non-EL students, for SPED students, it was compared to non-SPED, for free-reduced, it was compared to non-free and reduced.
And I get that, and I understand that the state wants us to do certain things, but to, to kind of disrupt things, or kind of look differently, just if we can noodle on having that goal that the state has put out there for us of 90%, maybe that should be our goal we're reaching for as opposed to a moving target.
Similar to reading, this is a distribution pattern of our student performance over the four achievement levels. And again, similar to reading, you can see that the pattern is pretty steady over the three years. We have, for all students, we have about a third in the exceeds category, and about a fifth in the bottom, which is does not meet. Comparing our black students with our white students, we see that it's almost the reverse, if you look at the two ends of the distribution. Our black students, we have about 40% to 46% at the exceeds level, and about 8% to 9% at the does not meet. Whereas with our black students, we are seeing the exact same, like 8, 7% to 8% at exceeds, it's the reverse. And then 46% to 47%, 45% to 47% at does not meet. Again, when we start making real changes rather than incremental changes, we would expect this to move, shift, so that our does not meet category is reduced steadily over time. I've included the four-year graduation, sorry.
I like this. I don't like what it's saying, I don't like what it looks like, but I like that you put this together, that this shows something. And it does tell a story, in that, in my interpretation of the story, is that we're doing really well on teaching certain kids and not doing so well on others. And it could be that they're just not receiving the same message, the same way. And that's, that's what we were alluding to earlier, is racial equity, and reversing, or not reversing it, but making it more equal in those colors instead of reversed.
Yeah, absolutely, I think, you know, this tells a story of access and opportunity, and who are we reaching, and who are we not? Who are we teaching, who are we not? And are we able to shift those patterns so that it becomes, if I take away the labels, white and black students, you wouldn't know who they are.
The other thing I like about this chart is it gets rid of the myth that all black students are not succeeding. There are black students that are succeeding, and I think it's important that they be recognized, and that we recognize that as well, while we're working on the rest of our problems.
Absolutely. I've put together this chart with the four-year graduation rates, which you are already familiar with. There is no new data here. Remember that graduation rates come a year later than achievement data. And here you can see that on the left-hand side, we have our St. Louis Park groups, and I have shown you three groups, our black students, white students, and English learners. On the right, we have the statewide graduation rates for the same groups of students. And as you can see, we are significantly ahead of the state with respect to graduation rates, especially for our black students. However, looking at our achievement data, providing context, are we sending our black students, are we graduating them ready for career and college? Are we graduating them ready to succeed? So what do we do with all this data? We have already had the annual data retreat earlier in August. And at the annual data retreat, school leadership teams from pre-K to high school brought leadership teams and spent the whole day looking at the data in different ways, reflecting on the data. And they don't look just at the state assessment data, they also look at data from other standardized tests, as well as discipline data. Discipline. And that provides a picture of what's going on in the classroom outside of achievement. Some themes from the data retreat survey, we had a 78% response rate, and these are from the open-ended responses. Participants said that they felt empowered and inspired by superintendent's opening messages. There was also, it was absolutely clear that participants owned the data. There were no conversations trying to find reasons for this achievement data, reasons that were outside their influence. So in short, the data was the result of my actions. This was very clear in their responses. Participants thought it was valuable to share perspectives, multiple perspectives, on what the data means. Participants spent time reflecting on the gap between what they believe and what the results show. The urgency of our mission, this was another theme that came through the responses. Next steps are that the leadership teams who came at the data retreat are going to finish up their 2017, 18 school improvement plans. They're going to set their goals and their action steps for how they're going to get to those goals. And throughout the year, the superintendent with district administrators will monitor their action plans and progress towards goals. The sites will receive ongoing support from district administrators throughout the year. And then the plans will be revised during the year to change course if it shows that the actions are not having the desired results. That concludes my presentation, if there are any other questions?
Joe?
So do we break the data down by classroom?
MCA data?
Yes.
Teachers have access to that.
Okay. So when, so in the data retreat or outside of the data retreat, do we have teachers who are, I mean, we've seen like this overall district average? So I'm assuming, I'm assuming we have some sort of a bell curve for how the teachers are performing or reaching folks. And I'm wondering what we do when we do see the teachers who are reaching students and the data that we have from that, how we share the practices of those teachers with the remaining group?
So I'll make a few comments. If it were only so easy for a teacher to see consistent results from year to year. And that simply reminds us that education is dependent on so many factors. One of the ways that teachers are able to look at each other's results are through PLCs. So for example, when they do the literacy tests in the elementary levels, and they take certain students who are at high risk of not being at grade level, they put them on monitoring, progress monitoring. Then when they meet regularly to look at how progress monitoring is going, they are able to see very clearly, as measured by that one assessment, who might be getting results that are better or faster than other teachers. So at that point, they can have the conversation about what are you doing? And see if that's going to be translatable to another classroom. And I think the other way that this happens is the work that teachers do with equity coaches, where the equity coaches are asking them to reflect on what they believe that they are trying to do in the classroom, or what beliefs their actions are grounded in, and the actual results. Are they actually doing what they believe they need to do? And the other aspect of sharing has, okay, let me back up. So for example, for a long time, we were in this realm of strategies, where you just go and learn strategies that are successful, without any thought to, do I have beliefs in which those strategies can be anchored? So I think that the work that we are doing with our teachers and equity coaches has to do with building that belief foundation, which is very aligned to our core values, that if we believe every child has equal intrinsic worth, then how would I be teaching that child? So I think my longish answer to your question, Joe, is that teachers do share where they're seeing success, but to see success consistently on every measure does not often happen.
So then are we, how, are we, or how do we track those sorts of interventions? Meaning, when it is exchanged in a PLC, or there is an equity coach that comes in and has what we qualitatively think is a good discussion, are we, are we tracking those things? Are we, are we getting? I talked to the superintendent about this last week, but I want to get to the point where we're looking at equity coaches and all the things that we're doing, and putting more rigor to how we're assessing it and how we're getting data. So going back, my question is, do we track those things? Or can we track those things in order to see that those, that those actions are helping?
I would say in a loose way, yes, but measurement is such a difficult task. For example, the MCA's are not meant to make decisions at the classroom student level. We cannot use MCA's to decide a teacher's evaluation, for example, an individual teacher's evaluation, because the MCA's are designed for systemic accountability. They're designed to tell us if a school is performing well or not. We have the tripod student engagement survey, for example, based on decades of research out of Harvard. And even they will tell you that do not use the student engagement survey to set teacher goals. So I wish I could tell you that, yes, we have very definite reliable measures that can say whether a teacher is making progress or not. How we would, how we plan to do it is take a set of indicators and derive a holistic understanding of is this teacher consistently getting good results or better results than his or her peers?
So last question, I'll let someone else go in. So then what are, what are a couple of examples of the indicators?
We would derive them from, we wouldn't add any new data, because, you know, we already have a lot of test data. So we would use MAP, we would use MCA's, we would use student engagement survey, we might use classroom observations. But this is something that will have to be discussed, we don't have something in place right now. But it would have to be triangulated, and it would have to depend on our putting together these different indicators. In a way, that makes sense for us. And, but again, we're creating a system, so how will it be, how reliable will it be over time? That we will have to see.
Thank you.
Karen?
I'd like to point out, we went through the strategic planning process. So three years ago was the first year of our new strategic plan. Last year, 2016, 17, was the first year that we had everybody committed to working with an equity coach. And that model was, it had been a test. We had been using building instructional leaders, we had been using equity coaches. And then MDE said, you have to commit to one or the other, what's your choice? And Park Association of Teachers agreed, we're going to go all-in on the equity coaching model. So last year was the first year that we did that. We still need to adjust and refine... We still need to adjust and refine how we do that work. But what I appreciate about our strategic planning model is we analyze the results every single year, and we make adjustments accordingly. So as I'm looking at this process, we're into 2017-2018, I'm expecting a lot of good progress, because we've done the kindergarten redesign. We still need to work on those other cohorts of kids that did not benefit from that process. But I think that combined with a real commitment to the equity coaching model is going to move us forward. Like the chart that Ken really likes, that I really like, we're going to see some dramatic changes in that, because our teachers have committed to doing this. This is their mission. And, and it's what we, as board members, are asking them to commit to.
Yes.
Yep. Prash, I just want to be clear for me and for people who are done with the Vikings and are watching us now. At the data retreat, our educators get this data broken down by grades, by schools, in a lot more detail than the district averages. Is that true?
Yes, absolutely. So every school, and you received copies of the data retreat book, but beyond that, in our data warehouse, data is available in many different ways, by grade level, grade level sections, grade level wide, school, by student groups.
So I just have some general questions, maybe for Carrie or you, and maybe you can or can't. I'm just wondering what you have learned in that breaking out some of the data, if there's some systemic things that show up that we don't see in the averages? For example, do kids do great in elementary school, and then is there a middle school falloff? Do we have a, do we have any gendered data? Are our schools geared to teach girls and not more active boys? That's a little stereotypical, but, you know, that's kind of my general question. Do we see other systemic things in analyzing the data in more detail than we're getting here? Do we see where some of our innovations have been working or not working? Or are we just, this is the data, and we don't know what's working, what's not, or what it suggests that we should look at to make changes?
I'll let Prash answer.
I'll just make a very general statement, that we do know proficiency rates decline as you go up the grade levels statewide and in our system also. And there can be many thoughts or comments about why that is so, but in general, that's true. And this, I don't think it's a coincidence that when you look at student engagement data or student survey data, you also see that students feel less excited about school as they go up the grade levels. They feel less excited about school? So those would be two general statements.
Nancy, I would just add that as a district administration team, we look at the data 16 different ways, in addition to what you have available in the data book. And we do that on purpose, to find the trends and to find what's working and what's not, not working. What kinds of professional development do our teachers need? What kind of support do our principals need? And so we're starting to tease that out, but it is complicated. It's very rare. I can't think of an instance in my career where it's just been one variable that you can isolate. So we look at it from multiple perspectives, we look at it from different angles, and we start to look for patterns and trends. And that's where we're going to be able to go next. Now that our first cohort of kindergarteners in the redesign process have been in our school for four years, we're starting to get some trend data. We also redesigned our elementary intervention programs. We've had some success, some change in, in dynamics in middle school math, for example. So we can ask questions now that we weren't asking before, and that might lead us to some more insights.
I want to give a, nice job, a nice packet, nice overview on what everything is here. It's interesting what the state's doing now. It's really, I made some notes here, I'm just going to go through them real quickly. And that is the one on every, every student success. Bruce and I have been talking about this for a long time, IDPs, individual development plans. It sounds like it's starting to come about where you're, we'll be able to take a look at each individual student and then measure how that student is. I know we've already had that data before, and it's difficult to dig into it, but it's nice to see that the state's going to, the way I interpret this, I don't know if it's true or not, but that they're going to kind of support that action. And I think that's the way we need to do, is get to the students, so that we see the growth in the student, and then bubble that back up to groups and whatnots. And, and then you'll see your true success, as opposed to a group muddled success. And then I still question about this 90%. I don't, it's, it's going to be a tough, tough one to get to in eight years, but if anyone can do it, I know St. Louis Park can do it. And I have complete confidence that they can, when we start changing and equity things start happening. And a lot of stuff is happening that's been happening over the last few years, and it's just going to, it's going to keep going. So I'm excited to see about the third graders, really, really excited to see that happening. And then the last one, this one, I don't, I don't know if it's, so in the data retreat, you said that they're going to come up with a 2017-2018 goals, which is great, but I was, I was wondering, is there also a long-term goal, other than just the goals that have been mandated to us, that, that individuals also have, so that when they're doing that 2017-2018 goal, they'll know kind of what that, that end is, instead of the end is next year? None of them really questions, they're statements, you can think about it, you can hear me later, but it's just, it'd be nice to see, or have, no.
Things for us to think about, and also, you know, under Superintendent Osai's leadership, I'm sure we'll be looking at all of these and thinking about what changes are to be made.
So changes, and also I think where Joe was going a little bit is, is measures. So if it's not working, can we somehow, you know, is that model, we're hearing that we're hoping we're successful, and we're thinking we're going to be successful, but if there's a way to break it down, why it's not, why has it fallen short? Because we have made a shift now to everyone's doing equity coaching, and so we got to support it, and then let's measure it and learn. Think that's where you were going, Joe? Okay. All right. Did you want to make a comment? All right, Prash, thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Can I say something? I just remembered something that Superintendent Osai has said about building capacity. It takes skills and knowledge and the will. And the will is about hearts and minds. So it has to be all of those things. And I believe we are working on those. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Our next item on our agenda is policy development. We have first readings on 514 bullying, 526 hazing. Cindy, did you want to comment? I think there was, was that the one, there were some changes in, there were some red, recommended changes?
Yes, thank you, Chair Yarosh. Bullying prohibition is, as it stands with MSBA, I do see a few typos, and I'll bring back a cleaner copy for you for a second reading. Postrophe S, a few things in plural, nothing that changes content, so I apologize for that. On the hazing, everything that's read and underlined and read and strike through are recommended changes from the School Board Association. It's not anything that we haven't heard before, it's just now in print of all the things that we are recommended to consider in language, to encompass all of our students.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments? This is again, first reading, we'll have a time to look at it again. And Karen, you noticed some typos that you talked to Cindy about already? That's how that, yeah, thanks. All right. All right. All right, no hearing. Oh, did you have a comment? Go ahead.
No, I just, I have one question about the bullying policy. When we look at Roman numeral three, step H, student means a student enrolled in a public school or charter school, we don't explicitly state it, but I think an expectation is, when private school students are in our public schools for services, they are held to these policies. Do you see what I mean? We're not specifically stating that that's our expectation, but I think that it is.
So maybe you're suggesting maybe a broader, there are circumstances, and Tammy's not here, where we may provide special ed services to a public school student, either, excuse me, private school, thank you. And so maybe that's something to consider broadening, so that when we are working with them, and if, if they're with other students, et cetera, and I believe, or we also have cyberbullying as part of this too, yep. So...
I have reached out to counsel, legal counsel, with Karen's same question is being risen at the moment, because this is directly from Minnesota School Boards Association as it's written. So I'm waiting for determination on whether we need to add that, or if that's encompassed.
Yeah. No, that's a good point. If we are, when we do service, the student should mean any student that we are engaged with, and what I would agree, so. So that will come back next, next board meeting, so we could, any other comments? Okay. How about our next is then policy development for our second readings. 417, chemical use and abuse, 418, drug-free workplace, 501, weapons, 502, search of lockers. And we did have some comments last time, and there were some updates and changes based on our discussion.
Yes, Chair Yarosh, 417, drug use and abuse. It was requested that, I believe it's in the procedure, page 56 of Board Book, that item F, school and community advisory team, be removed, and it shows, shows that as a strike through.
And then also...
418, I did not see have any recommended changes. 501, weapons, I did not have any recommended changes. Moving over to 502, search of student lockers, desks, personal possessions, and students' person, under procedures, item E, strip search was to be removed, and it has been so stricken.
Is a, on the search of student lockers, it's been a while since we've heard of a report. I'm not exactly sure what we're doing now. I know we still have some dog searches, and at one time, we, years ago now, we had talked about having the dogs go through students, because the students who were wont for that type of behavior would just bring it in there, take it out of the lockers, keep it in their backpack. So at one point, we talked about, do we want to bring dogs through classrooms and interrupt? And I think at that time, the board said no. And to be honest, I don't know what we're doing now. So maybe for a future meeting, is that interest of anyone else, what we're doing in that regard, with our drugs, dog searches?
I assume it hasn't changed from what we said before, and that I'm not hearing any need to make a change. If the circumstances are different, somebody could come back to us, but I'd be very reluctant to...
You can certainly check with Principal Myers and have him get with Superintendent Osai, is exactly what the process is, and share with the board. But as far as public presentation, I don't believe that anything's changed.
Yeah, I'm just looking at 502 and the procedures, and I like the change that's been made. I would add one suggestion for our superintendent to think about adding, because the procedures are the superintendent's thing to do, that's not our policy. So it's, I would think in D, we might add a search of a clothed person shall be conducted in private, so we're really clear about what's okay and what's not.
Where are we, Nancy? 502?
Procedures D.
Procedures D.
502D. Here, you can pass this down.
Got it, yep. I see it.
You can give that to our superintendent. I think that just makes our procedure more consistent and clear.
Again, that, that is a procedure. I don't think that is something that we would necessarily delay our vote on this. So, all right. So any other comments on those policies that we'll be voting on in a few moments? Okay. Hearing none, we will move to the action agenda. Item one, on the action agenda, approval of policy second readings, 417, chemical use and abuse, 418, drug-free workplace, 501, weapons, 502, search of lockers. It is recommended the school board approve as a second reading policies, 417, chemical use and abuse, 418, drug-free workplace, 501, weapons, 502, search of lockers, as presented and just discussed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ken. Second by Bruce. Any further, welcome. Any further discussion?
So any typos that were found get kind of tracked offline, or?
Yeah. Or those are on the first reading, I believe. Yeah, they were on the first reading policy. So these have already been vetted.
Okay. I saw one on 418.
Okay.
It's small, it's a typo.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just on, under enforcement, A, under enforcement, A1, accordance, has a zero in it.
Catch that, Cindy?
Oh, can you give me that one more time?
Which policy? Want to go which?
418, under enforcement, A1, accordance, the word accordance has an extra...
418, Roman...
I can...
Can you tell me what page of Board Book you're on, Joe?
76. I can walk it over there.
So we'll get that tape, Karen. So friendly amendment to fix all typos. I'm sure Mr. Richardson's okay with that.
I'm fine.
Okay. So we have a move, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes 7-0. All right. Next item is the approval of employment agreement, St. Louis Park Custodial and Grounds Employee Group Contract 2017-2019. It is recommended the school board approve the employee agreement between Independent School District Number 283 and the SEIU St. Louis Park Custodial and Grounds Employee Contract for the 2017-18 and 2018-19 school years as presented. Rick, I trust that you're speaking on this?
Chair, members of the board, superintendent, yes, I can give you a brief update. This is one of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 contracts that we have open in this cycle. We are currently bargaining with our clerical group, our childcare educators, our teachers, our technical employees. The principal's contract is open, we haven't started with them yet. School Nutrition and Spark paraprofessionals. This is the first contract that we have agreement, we have worked with a number of groups over the summer, but the custodians are here year-round, and it's easier to, to work over the summer and with bargaining with them. I think this is a good contract. It represents, economically, it's within the board parameters that were established as part of our round for this, for this group of contracts. We did some very, I think, some creative things. We looked at our salary schedules, made sure that they were competitive and didn't just put a standard amount across every single cell, but looked at where some things might have been high, and actually reduced some steps to incent people to move from, you know, promotional series from class one to class two to class three, and get higher licensures and certifications. So that, I think, was a good move. We changed some things about how people progress through steps, which I think makes more economic sense for us and gives incentives for people who take initiative. We lengthened the probationary period from six months to nine months, you know, to give us a longer look at people as they're, as they're doing some of these jobs that have become more complex over time. We tried to take care of some of the health insurance increases that we've seen, you know, that have, that have in our contracts. And we added one step to the custodian schedule in the second year, so that they're more consistent with all of our other groups, and they have 11 steps or 10 years per... 11 steps or 10 years progression through our salary ranges, so I think there were a lot of good changes.
Any questions? So it's a little atypical if I'm recalling correctly to settle with the groups prior to the teachers. Usually the teachers go first and that's been my experience. Am I wrong and is this something new, is this positive?
I don't think you're wrong, but I, we had that discussion with custodians saying, you know, our practice has been to treat everyone fairly, we don't give everything to one group and then, and then say, whoops, there's nothing left for you. They trusted our behavior, that we would, you know, come through on that and ultimately I said, I don't want you to settle if you think we're going to do something more for somebody else and then come back and say, hey. So they said this is a fair deal, we like the changes that have been made and they've settled on their own accord.
And I'm sorry, what was, what were the annual percentages?
The annual percentages are a little, yeah, a little pack.
Why are you telling me the package percentage if that's more relevant?
Yeah, we kept our total package percentage under 7 percent and that's including health insurance, step increases, all of the certification increases, everything, all total pension, et cetera.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, I already read the, it's recommended that we approve, present, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion, questions, comments? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, that passes seven zero. We're on to communications and transmittals. Karen?
Thank you, I love talking about children-first assets and we had asset five and asset seven, the caring school climate and the community values youth. On day one, it was awesome to see all the community members who came out to cheer our kids at our schools. I want to thank everybody out in the community who put out welcome back signs on their front yard, that was great to see, so great to see so many people coming out to cheer on our kids. The next thing coming up, the Community Education Advisory Council is hosting a community forum about the referendum. It'll be on Tuesday, September 19th at 7:00 PM here in room C350. Our superintendent, Aston Osai, will be presenting. That's going to be a great opportunity for people to take a look at, is the model going to be available? The model will be available to see what we're talking about at the high school. And then finally, I can't even believe I'm saying it, but the senior all-night party 2018 planning is underway and they've already had the first fundraiser, thank you to everybody who bought a hot dog for me this summer. But the planning meeting for that is also set for Tuesday, September 19th at 8:00 PM in the REC Center and we are looking for more parent involvement with that and it's a 50-plus year tradition. I actually had a couple come up who were the, the first year we had the party was our graduating class and we're happy to buy hot dogs to support this year's group. But it's S L P S A N P 22018 at gmail dot com if you'd like to be added to the list. And you don't have to be a senior family to participate, we'd like junior families to learn this gig so that they're ready to direct it the following year. Thank you so much.
Okay, any further, all right, Ken?
Okay, so last meeting I said that we were talking to Jenny Magno and she was doing this event for students, I'll pass this out now, you can pass them down, for my one thing, my one thing, I ask you guys all to think about my one thing that you're going to do differently, I understand, I, that's like the reading thing, I didn't complete it all, but I'm sure am going to continue to read it, so thank you for not questioning me on that. So I won't question you on if you've made your one thing yet, but eventually you'll get around to writing down your one thing and I, I'm just going to keep mine, I'm actually going to put it on my phone, so every time I see it, I'll, it'll bring me to mind to what I think my one thing is. So the one thing, and I'll share if anyone's interested.
I am interested.
Okay, so people are interested in it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I was evaluating myself and I was thinking and self-reflection and, and all kinds of things and the one thing I am going to make every effort to change this year is allow my core values to show up at every time I do.
Ken, I like that.
Thank you.
You just set the bar very high.
Nancy?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things. One, day one was outstanding, I was at the high school and we just had such a wonderful turnout of adults this year through some added efforts to let people know come, it's really a fun thing to do and I think that probably happened at all the other schools as well. And the kids were just always delightful as they come back and some of them are very happy to see us and some of them would rather avoid us and mostly they're excited to see themselves and that's the way it should be, so it was really a great first day at the high school. I'm going to be out on fun for the next couple of meetings in Europe and I'll come back with stories to anybody who wants, I'll think about my one thing there, Ken.
There you go, yes.
But there are, there is a school board election happening and I am not running, so I feel really free to talk about it. And neither is Mr. Yarosh and neither is Mr. Richardson, so there are three seats. Karen Waters is running again and then we have four other candidates, Ann Casey, Mary Tomback, Bruce Cantor and Christine Johnson, I want to make sure I got them all in. There, I'm told, Karen, you have a mic, so if I'm wrong you can correct me, but I'm told that the forums are going to be, the League of Women Forum is October 5th, I'm not quite sure where, but stay tuned, I'm sure there'll be some announcements about that, that's what I'm hearing. And I'm hearing that the Allies of St. Louis Park are going to have a forum at the library on October 16th. So those are the two public events that I'm aware of and I'm sure the candidates are having their other events as well, but those are the ones where you can hear all the candidates, you know, what is it, compare and contrast Bruce, is that what we do, compare and contrast? Yeah, yeah.
I was just asking Bruce if we wanted, if he wanted us to write them in and he said no, so, just for everybody out there.
All right, oh, we'll go Bruce and then back to Ken.
Number one on my list is the St. Louis Park Business Council and of the, some of the adults who were there at the high school, Tom Junella came as part of the St. Louis Park Business Council to welcome in our high school kids and that was just wonderful and he brought his neighbors with him, so that was also super. And then Aston and I were at the Business Council together and Aston had to leave before he got to present, because he had to go, this was Thursday, and he had to go welcome in the kindergartners. And so I didn't get a chance to do that because I was addressing, when we're at the council, we get to talk about what's happening in the schools and I had visited each of the schools on day one and I had so much fun, I can't tell you what a great time I had, but I let Tom speak for the high school, because that was neat for a community member to be there and he talked about it and he just had a great time. I was at the middle school, walking around again, our wonderful teachers, I can't say enough about them, I happened to stop in Joe Gibson's class, who I adore, and she's, she's just super, stopped in the media center, just what a, what a wonderful opportunity. Then I hit Peter Hobart and police officer there was Jen and she, she's just great. And then I met a social worker who had come back, she had retired two years ago and now she's come back to work part-time with us. And, and again, the kids getting off the buses, their mutual support was so super. PSI, I did a walkabout with Cory and that was just great, but I talked to a bunch of the support staff people and they are just wonderful and the caring they bring to it. And I walked into one of the first grade classes where they happen to have a male teacher and one of my neighbors was there. And when you see the excitement of, and I was out of, totally out of context for this little boy and he just, Eli saw me and he just waved and we had a great time, so that was super. And then at Aquila was, I was walking down the hall and these two very little people walked by with all the swagger and the confidence that you, you cannot believe, these were first graders and of course they'd been there before, so they were very confident, they were doing errand for the teacher and it was just wonderful to see. And then from that size to the largest person I met that day who happened to be Aston, because our superintendent was out visiting all the schools also and we just happened to cross paths and it was just super to, to see the kids and the welcome among the teachers for Aston and that was, that was great too. And then over at Susan Lindgren and I'll end with, I've talked about principals and teachers, but I'll end with the teachers. Oh, I did want to mention one more thing, at Aquila, one of the custodians stopped me in the hall because he didn't know who I was. And that was interesting because that is our procedure and I did happen, my badge must have slipped under my coat because he stopped me and he talked to me and I, we introduced each other and he'd been there 25 years. I mean, when you have that kind of service, those good people really take care of our kids and of course the school's in great shape. But at Susan Lindgren, I want to end with the teachers because they bring so much. I stopped in this one teacher's room as they were doing their orientation and this is an old friend, I knew her when she was a first, first-year teacher when I was on the site council at Susan Lindgren and this is her 27th year. So it was just wonderful, again, that kind of experience, our principals, our teachers, our custodians, everybody, all our support people just do such a great job. That was a wonderful day one. Second thing is Aston and I were at the Association Metropolitan School Districts meeting, we had a presentation from the, Bill Morris who does surveys for us and he's in the process of doing a survey for us now. And, and the, the message there is we need to make sure we get out there and we motivate our pro-education voters. Those are the people, we have a big referendum coming up, we'll be out, we'll all be out talking about it, that's great, but it's to bring out those voters and make sure we motivate them and the work that Sarah's doing with Bill Morris and his group is just excellent. Finally, I got a nudge from Karen to say this weekend is homecoming, football team is one and one, doing great, so get out and support our kids.
Bruce just stole my thunder. I got it.
All right.
But I'll add, we, we got our passes this week, so go, there's no excuse am I not to go there, I'm sure Mr. Superintendent Osai is going to be there because he loves football and we are playing Holy Angels, of which is going to be a tough game, but, it's going to be a tough game. The, the team actually is doing better than what the last scores showed, but I, the, the football team has a lot of hope and promise this year, so.
Great.
Go support your park.
All right, any others? All right, not hearing any, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Bruce.
Second.
Seconded by Jim Bennecke, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned.